It is six o'clock, so we will get started on the first of two nights that you get to watch this board up here on the stage or just off the stage. Presenting tonight our bond hearing to talk about our school projects that we have coming to the ballot in March. And then tomorrow night we will have our public hearing, the first of two sessions, you'll have to comment on the actual school budget for the FY twenty-three year. I'm Tom Goffier, the Chair of the Amherst School Board. Should do introductions. To my left here, we'll go through the school board itself. Our Vice Chair is Elizabeth Kuzma, Victoria Parisi and Josh Conklin are here as well, and then Terry Bean is at home tonight listening remotely as she's able to join in. And then to my right, we have our Superintendent of SAU thirty-nine, Adam Steele. To his right is our SAU thirty-nine Business Administrator, Amy Facy. I do want to take a minute to point out that we have a couple of our experts here tonight, Banwell Architects, Ingrid Nichols and Brad Prescotts. When you see the design plans that we have coming up through the slide tonight, you'll get to see their handiwork. And then hopefully in a couple of years, I'll get to see the handiwork of DEW Construction. They are represented tonight by Dan Riley and Matt Weeden. So we have a slideshow tonight. And then afterwards, we will have questions as a standard public hearing type of setup would allow as well. So we'll go through the slideshow, myself and Victoria will present. And then after that, we'll open it up for questions to Amherst residents. If you are a Montverne resident here tonight, we will take comments and questions that you might have as well, but out of courtesy to Amherst voters. I don't think we're going to be stressed for capacity. We will have them go first. And then any Montverne voters can certainly take part in that after as well. So let me minimize my screen here. So to get started tonight, our bond hearing getting set for a facility project that will show up as Article twelve on the ballot on March eighth of twenty-twenty-two, just a couple of months away. In fact, it's about, what is it, sixty days away, give or take? It'll be for the amount of eighty-three million, and you'll see the bond amount will be eighty-two million and change, and then eight-hundred-and-thirty thousand will come as a separate appropriation as part of that as the initial interest that we can use as part of this project as well. And you'll see it broken up there roughly fifty-two million for the elementary school project, a new K pre-K through five school on the site of Clark Wilkins, and then a renovated Amherst Middle School for roughly thirty-one million. Those specific numbers, when all is said and done, might look a little bit different than what they are, but just know that when we bond the eighty-three million, that will be the final number that'll go to voters and that'll be the max that we have to spend. So it may look a little bit different with how it breaks down at the end, but that eighty-three million number will not change unless it goes down. So to get us to this point, just a quick kind of high level look at this. It's the process, the end result of a multi-year process that was led by our Joint Facilities Advisory Committee. It's a committee that was comprised of volunteers from the town, board members for Amber School Board, this iteration and past iterations, and then members of the SAU staff and the Amherst School District staff. And they came forward with a proposal in twenty-twenty that got us to this point where we are now recommending a major addition to our elementary school and then a total renovation of our Amherst Middle School. So the specific timeline developed like this. It started in two thousand and seventeen with the results of a capital needs assessment. It would tell us how much it would cost for us to operate the facilities that we have. We did it for the entire SAU, including South Heaton. Certainly, our focus was on the buildings that were affected in the Amherst School District, Clark Wilkins and then Amherst Middle School. A year later, the Joint Facilities Advisory Committee was formed with the people that I mentioned before. And then in two thousand and nineteen, after extensive work by that committee, they came forward with a proposal to ask the town for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to investigate long-term solutions for what we could do with the schools. And it could have been everything from a renovation to moving the schools, to building new schools, a wide variety of options that we wanted to look at. So in two thousand and twenty, that one hundred and fifty thousand dollars was approved by the town voters. We hired the Valley Brenziger that spring to start developing those options. And they came back with, as I mentioned, a wide array of options for us to look at renovating buildings, blowing them up and starting all over. And in their work, they looked at many more options than what we'll focus on here tonight. They discussed again just maintaining the facilities as they are, filling out that capital needs assessment, renovation, new schools. They even looked at getting schools and building new schools in different locations and where we are now with some of the land that the district owns or land that maybe the district would purchase as part of a project like this. But eventually, after sifting through all the options, the board decided to go forward with the plan that you will, you'll see here tonight. So specifically over the last year, this process, we really started this a year ago, presenting this to the public. We talked about it at last year's public hearing. But the board ultimately decided that in the midst of a pandemic, not knowing the economic impact, and then really because the board didn't do a good enough job getting the information out there to the public, we decided to put this off for one more year. So that's why we talked about it at the public hearing last year, did not talk about it at deliberative. So it wasn't on the ballot when we voted this past June, but we decided to bring it forward this year. And we spent really the last twelve months getting voters ready with the information, doing a lot more diligent work to be able to have a much more complex plan to bring forward to voters this year. So during that twelve months, we've had additional pieces that have fallen into place. I mentioned the hiring of our architect, Banwell Associates, certainly followed by the hiring of a construction manager, DEW, and then the site and civil engineer, Ty and Bond. Working with Banwell, we saw multiple design options over the course of the summer. And then you'll get to see in a little while the options that the board voted on tonight in that final design. Now, once that was done, we started to work with all parties, including SAU staff, to further refine the cost estimates. You may remember last year, we talked about a ninety-eight million dollar figure, and that has been reduced to a much more conservative, still a big number, eighty-three million. But we'll have the reasons for that and why we were able to bring that down as we go through the course of the project here tonight. So that is what it's looked like over the last year specifically. There is one more point to highlight on this is that we have had public forums. We've had three of them so far. And we have a fourth one scheduled for January twenty-second, and then we'll have two more, one in February, and then one the week of voting week on March eighth. And this is just a chance for the public to come out, look at the plans, talk, talk about the plans, ask us questions, ask our architect or the construction manager questions, but then also to take a look at the schools and get a kind of that hands-on experience as to why we're putting these projects on the ballot here this year. So you get a chance to come out and really understand everything that went into the decision-making process and get a chance to see what is going to happen. So to take you through the why we did this and why we were doing this and what this project looks like, I will turn it over to Victoria Parisi.
Okay, we are going to, I don't need my papers because all the notes are on the computer screen. We're going to present you with a lot of information this evening. It's going to be a lengthy presentation. The bond warrant is important, and we want to be as comprehensive in our presentation as possible. So please bear with us as we go through so much information for you. I'll be discussing the facility project goals. The school buildings are older and they have end-of-life systems that are not energy efficient. They are also costly to maintain. We want to utilize the existing land and the buildings in the most efficient manner possible. We want to have functional spaces that meet the needs of the established board class-size targets. And security is important to our community, as well as having a technology-rich and adequate classroom spaces. The health and safety of our students and staff is extremely important to the community. The portable classrooms are end-of-life, detached from the main building and do not benefit from the full security measures within the main building. We have inadequate temperature, in some cases requiring a classroom on one side of a hall to keep a door open with a fan blowing the hot air out of their room and into a cold room on the other side of the hallway. Cool closets are some, in some classrooms are kept open to help bring the classroom temperature down on hot days. There's poor air circulation due to aging systems, poor light quality and a lack of acoustical separation at the middle school. It hinders the focus of students in class day-to-day. The physical space that is available for our students is limited. Amherst has utilized portable classrooms at various school sites over the last two decades to support overcrowding in the main educational buildings. As I mentioned, four classrooms are still in use at Wilkins. Today, additional space is required to provide meaningful IDEA programming, enrichment programming and other support services. I will speak to this later in the presentation. Finally, the mechanical, electrical and plumbing systems are inefficient and nearing end of life. Higher-quality replacements are available with higher energy efficiency and they are cost-effective. The expected life of Wilkins and the AMS building is fifty years. Wilkins is fifty-five years old and AMS is fifty years old. In Amherst, short-term solutions have been favored by voters. Over the last thirty years, that includes portable trailers and small additions. Larger initiatives such as building an upper elementary school to alleviate crowding have narrowly failed at the polls. This brings us to the situation we are in today. Here are some pictures of Clark School. The picture in the center of the slide shows where kindergarten students receive their lunches in the hallway. There is no kitchen at Clark, so the meals are made at Wilkins and they are driven to Clark in the private car of a staff member. You'll also notice that there are carts being stored in this hallway, as well as book storage on the bench near the brick wall. Continuing with the theme of an area doing double duty, the multipurpose room is serving as the lunchroom and the location of all specials, music, physical education and even the library. The other spaces in the building have been utilized for classroom space and intervention space. While we're speaking about Clark, I think it's important to note that a portion of the building, which is the multipurpose room, was partially funded through private donations when it became clear that a multipurpose room was needed. So here we are at Wilkins, just down the road. On the top left, you see the technology teacher. She's pushing a cart through the hallway. Because of the press on classroom space, the building no longer has a technology or a computer lab. Instead, this teacher travels to classrooms with devices on a cart. It has been estimated that a large portion of her day is inefficiently used by having to move classrooms. Again, physical space is a large concern in all of these pictures. The picture on the right shows storage of paper in a hallway. Space that was available for book storage was eventually taken, and those books had to go into the space where the paper had been stored. That forced the paper to now be stored in a hallway. Additionally, there are printer and other supplies in the picture on the left of the screen. These are also located in a hallway. Leadership and staff are trying their best to use every inch of space. Storage closets are currently used as office space, and they have maximized every inch of the building, and we are at a breaking point. The portables that have four classrooms in them are detached from the building, and they have been in place longer than they were initially thought to be needed. The brightly colored picture at the top represents a room that is being used for therapy interventions. Finally, I'd like to direct you to the picture at the center of the screen. This is a bathroom. It is located in one of the portables. The bathroom is located between two classrooms. So when you look at this picture, there is a door on the left and there's a door on the right, and each of those doors lead directly into a classroom. You'll also see a heater that is used to keep the water from freezing. And finally, there's a shared printer, and yes, it is located in a bathroom. On the JFAC website or the SAU YouTube page, there are walkthrough tours of Wilkins and AMS that are conducted by the principals and staff members for anyone interested in seeing another visual or hearing from staff who see the direct impact of our facilities. And finally, Amherst Middle School. As you can see at AMS, the same situation. We are maximizing every inch of space. Closets are being used for various offices, as in the picture with the blue walls. The building is of a certain age where printers and technology ports didn't exist how they do today. We don't have appropriate network ports and outlets, so the staff is forced to use them wherever they are in the building. One example is the picture in the center with the printer in the hallway. This is not the only printer that's located in the hallway at AMS. The picture of the railing represents outdated building codes. Things change over time, as we all know. The picture on the bottom left is a site that has not happened only one time. These are trash barrels collecting rainwater from leaking roof. There are locations throughout the building that leak during rainstorms. The ceiling tiles stain, the ceiling tiles are replaced, it rains again and it leaks again. Not pictured are the movable walls that are failing to keep acoustical separation between classrooms. The mechanical, electrical and plumbing systems are nearing end of life, and the entrance lacks a secure, modern entrance pattern. Reconfiguring the space at AMS aims to gain usable education space in classrooms. Many classrooms are currently triangle or pizza pie shaped. Because of one of their walls is an accordion style from the nineteen-seventy-two design, the district has found that some walls are failing and they present a risk to students. When a wall is deemed a safety hazard, they are costly to replace, and of course, we do see them in the budget and we do replace them to keep everyone safe. Additionally, the walls do not have electrical outlets, which limit the location of today's technology-rich classroom. These rooms have five hundred to six hundred square feet, and current New Hampshire DOE regulations require thirty-six square feet per child or nine hundred square feet, whichever is greater. Our rooms are significantly undersized. As I noted on the last slide, requirements for space have changed since the buildings were built fifty and fifty-five years ago. The funny thing about time is that nineteen-seventy doesn't seem like fifty years ago. Another reason for needing more space is our inclusion of special needs education, which has also changed over the last fifty years. The Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, IDEA, requires public school districts to offer supports and programs for students with special needs. The district is also required to provide services for Amherst children three and older before they enter kindergarten. These programs currently encompass eight classrooms across the district with a need for additional space. And finally, when an additional classroom is needed to achieve reasonable class goal sizes, an integrated arts teacher travels to individual classrooms with their materials on a cart, as you saw in the picture of the technology teacher at Wilkins. This is inefficient and it often disrupts neighboring classrooms. One of the pressures that led to researching the options for our school were growing class sizes. A survey with over one thousand respondents was completed in twenty-twenty. Increasing enrollment resulting in large class sizes and growing student-teacher ratios ranked among the top three concerns ranked among the top three concerns in that survey, along with aging and inefficient uh, facilities and safety and security. Enrollment projections are steady for the near future and allow the team to feel confident in the size of the proposed project. The proposed project will create a one-building elementary school to house preschool through fifth grade. Amherst Middle School will house sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. This configuration is developmentally appropriate and allows for AMS to be renovated without requiring an addition, which would be an added expense that J-FAC and the board did not wish to present to the community. Also, the Wilkins building is limited in terms of renovation or addition to the current building as the existing site limits expansion potential. The program needs require a second floor. And the existing structure is not designed to support another story. The cost would be expensive for restructuring, reinforcement, reconfiguration of interior masonry walls, and phasing and logistics, while keeping our school open are more expensive and more impactful to education. The consolidation of the elementary school would allow the consolidation of staff, services under one roof, ability to continue offering art, music, and possibly include other electives like foreign language. The reconfiguration would provide adequate space to conduct special services while offering privacy and dignity for every student. It would increase the capacity in the cafeteria and gym and eliminate the need and the expense for portable classrooms. This leaves many people wondering about the future of Clark. And J-FAC identified this question early on in the process and developed a committee to engage the community last year. This idea was to, the idea of the, of the committee was to generate ideas for what the future of the building could be, to discuss the potential outcomes and concerns, and be sure to include the residents of Amherst in the future plan for the site and for all school facilities. With that being said, Clark will remain a school with the classroom space being used during the construction phase. And in the long term, a number of possibilities exist, from a town-owned property to park space to a sale. All of those options will require additional input from the community and various boards. Every effort has been made over the course of the last two years to provide the most cost-effective way to meet the expectations of the town of Amherst for the type of school system that our residents expect, including our facilities. To recap much of what I have hit upon in previous slides, the recommendation by Amherst School Board to build a new elementary school to address the concerns includes a long-term facility plan, simple construction phasing to have the least impact on student learning, to address the antiquated systems with healthy, efficient systems, to bring the elementary school under one roof to include preschool through fifth grade, and the cost of a new build is cost comparative, if not less expensive than a renovation because of the structure of the building. If the needs that I have expressed are agreed upon by our community, there will never be a less expensive time to do this project. Tom will speak to the costs later in the presentation. Same question for the Amherst Middle School. Many of the reasons that the Amherst School Board is recommending to renovate the Amherst Middle School are similar to our recommendation to build a new elementary school. We look to have a long-term facility plan. We look for simple construction phasing to have the least impact on student learning. And we address the antiquated systems with healthy, efficient systems. It is cost prohibitive to build new, and this solution creates a like-new educational facility. Replacing the failing systems without reconfiguring spaces is extremely expensive. While the building is open for those system upgrades that are at end-of-life, it makes the most financial sense to address the need for more usable educational space and a more secure entrance. After the twenty twenty bond hearing, Amherst School Board decided to pause on the facility bond warrant article. During that pause, three goals were realized before we were willing to move forward. The first is to reduce the cost to taxpayers. We are now seeing, as Tom mentioned, we are seeing eighty-three million um, from ninety-seven, ninety-eight million last year. We also had the goal to limit the height of the elementary school building to two stories instead of three stories. And we wanted to maintain the twenty twenty facility project goals. So all of the things that we were aiming for last year, we were trying to get in this plan for less money with a two-story building. The way that we were able to reduce the cost was by ensuring that an elementary building was right-sized. And with that, I'll pass it off to Tom so he can go through the proposed projects and the renderings with all of you.
Thank you, Victoria. So first off, we'll start with the scope of the project of the elementary school building. This will be one building on Clark, the site of Wilkins School right now. And as Victoria mentioned, the future of Clark will, will be determined uh, many years down the road once we get the new school up and running because the space is needed um, at least for the construction term as an actual school. So kind of a three-part process here at the elementary building, all, obviously all happening at the same time. It's a renovation of the multipurpose room in the kitchen area. That is what's going to stay out of that current building. The rest of it's going to be wiped out and replaced by uh, something newer, bigger and better. So obviously, when the new kitchen you're going to have in there, the multipurpose room will be refurbished. There is some asbestos abatement out of that multipurpose room. And then all the usual doors, floors, walls, windows, technology upgrades, security upgrades for that front entrance. So all of that is going to be done in what is currently existing in the multipurpose room now. The rest of it, obviously, a much bigger addition. It's a two-story building. It'll include all the major uh, bells and whistles for the inside and the outside. Uh, the board did decide to go with a higher efficiency energy system, the HVAC system, which I believe we determined does have air conditioning as well, correct? Yes, it does have air conditioning. That's part of the reason we went to the secondary system. Um, so that it has the air conditioning as an option as well, in addition to the, to the higher efficiency. And then certainly everything else, furniture to the walls, to the windows will be replaced on that inside as well. And then as you'll see in the renderings in just a moment, there is significant site work that'll happen at Clark, keeping in mind wetlands mitigation because we do butt right up against the, the Beaver Brook Swamp River Beaver Brook area that's off to the side there, the south side of the school. So there is significant site work uh, that will be done as well. So as we look at the renderings here, this is a look at the front of the building. And you can see there on that far left-hand side, that is the multipurpose room as it exists right now. You can see the column entrance. That is where the new entrance is going to be. That is where the more secure entrance will be. We have one in their, in place now, but certainly the upgrades um, will take place and make it that much better. Obviously, any of the renderings you see tonight may change between now and by the time the schools are done, if everything passes. But this at least gives you an idea as to where we are design-wise right now. If you move to the right of that main entrance, this is sort of the south side of the building. Uh, you can see another look here, the multipurpose room is on that far left-hand side. This building will extend much further back than the additional building did. But because of where the multipurpose room is, we're not extending any closer to the road. So it's still going to have that Amherst feel where everything is set back well off the road. It's not going to encroach on the road um, like a different building would. It'll be a two-story building. We did have options where we looked at a three-story building. Uh, but certainly that was not something that the board went with. If you look at that south area uh, where the playgrounds are, that is a big focus for the administration and for the board as well. Multiple playground areas, multiple areas for different age groups. There will be direct access from the hallways in classrooms right into those areas. And then if you're familiar with the Wilkins Playground now, it's one playground and then there's a big Grove area. I'm drawing a blank on what the kids call it now, Ms. Perel. It is the Grove. Okay, so it's the Grove area. Thank you. Uh, so the Grove will remain there and kids will still be able to utilize that as an extra recess space, but just expanding and creating more opportunities for outside time for these kids to be able to get out there and play. And then at the very bottom, you can start to see that parent drop-off loop. It disappears out of your screen, but does go around the backside of the building as well. If you look at the other side, sort of that north, northeast side of the building, if you were up on the upper Wilkins Field, this is what it's going to look like from there. You can see the uh, the rendering of the path that comes in um, that it will take you up to the, what is now a staircase. That is sort of where that staircase is now. So again, you can see that this building goes significantly further back. This side of the building is where the bus pickup will be. And then in the center there, you can see a courtyard area which will provide natural lighting to some of those interior classrooms. Um, something that is certainly not an option in a building like this and in a building like AMS. So that will provide us an additional outdoor space, but also some of that natural lighting and ventilation options which we've all come to appreciate here in the last two years. Looking at the overhead site plan, I, I mentioned significant site work in the front lot here, uh, area here. You can see that there is an expanded parking lot. That is just a field right now. So there'll be upwards of two hundred parking spaces in front. So any events that are going on at the school, parking will be a little bit more convenient. You can see the overhead of what the school project will look like. Uh, there will be an athletic field in the back and then the upper Wilkins Athletic Field will stay the same as well. There is a road that's going to connect all the way out to Jones Road. Um, this site work was designed by Ty and Bond. They've done a number of school projects. Certainly, the initial site plan, things could change. Uh, we mentioned the multiple play areas, which you can see down here on this side of the school. We saw the overhead view, the closer view of that earlier. Um, the access road to Jones Road is, is for emergency use and to be able to alleviate some of that Boston Post Road traffic. We have been in touch with town committees. Uh, they'll review the traffic plan in the next couple of years with us uh, as we go through this process. I mentioned the increased parking for school events. Um, and certainly neighbors in this area, we encourage them to come, you know, learn more about the site work and the impacts on this area at some of the different uh, public forums that we have coming up here, the next one on January twenty-second. If you look at the conceptual of the first floor drawing of the building, this is the part that we're keeping right now. That's the renovated multipurpose room in the current kitchen. Uh, the front office area, more admin offices, more space um, for the administration, which some of that has been combined offices now. Some of it's been uh, in closet spaces. Uh, there will be after-hours recreation opportunities because not only do we have the multipurpose room and a miniature-sized gym, there is a full-size gym being added sort of in the center of the school. Um, there are spaces at the front that'll be uh, handicap accessible, the back of the building, even though it extends way back, that will be a secure exit. Uh, the enclosed courtyard I mentioned earlier, that is this space right here. Uh, you'll have classrooms on the, on the inside of the building that will be able to gain some natural lighting from that courtyard and that will give us, uh, as I mentioned earlier, space for some outdoor recreation for kids and outdoor learning as well when the weather is appropriate. Several staircases can take you to the second floor. There are special services. That's some of this green space here. Um, we know that uh, Amherst School District has expanded special services quite a bit. Um, it's better for the kids, but it's also represents a cost-saving over having to tuition kids to other districts or to private schools or academies, plus the transportation. So there is a need for more space, which is part of this overall project design. There are special services on each floor so that those kids can stay close to their natural classrooms. On the first floor, you have the youngest grades and on the uh, top floor, third, fourth, and fifth grade, which will be moving down from Amherst Middle School here into the renovated Clark Wilkins Pre-K through five elementary school. As we head over to Amherst Middle School, this is, it's a major renovation. So basically, the walls and the ceiling will stay the same. The walls and the roof, I should, I say, will stay the same. Uh, pretty much everything else is going to go. We're even going to be adding in a secure front entrance, um, which will provide similar security to what we're going to have at the elementary school. Obviously, technology upgrades. And there is significant site work. I have not had to drop off or pick up a student at Amherst Middle School yet, but from all the stories that I've heard, it's a lot like that game of Frogger where kids are running across three lanes of traffic. So we're going to be able to alleviate a lot of that, or at least I hope Ty and Bond make sure that we do that because parents won't be happy if they have to continue to do that with their kids. So that'll all get taken care of in addition to all the inside gut work that's going to get done. Walls coming down, ceilings coming down, new HVAC, doors, floors, et cetera. And then there's asbestos abatement in this building as well. So if you look at the current floor plans compared to what is proposed, this is the gymnasium cafeteria area and then you also have uh, this is where some of our specials are, or I should say, this is where the new specials will be, some of the integrated arts programs. So this is what it will look like in the future. This is what it looks like now. Some of these triangle classrooms that we have, inefficient space, as Victoria touched upon. Uh, this is the cafeteria down here. This is the new office entrance where the administration will be. Got the double secure entrance there. Um, it really does make a much better use of the space. And then this green area, again, if you've ever uh, had a kid that's had a drum set in your house, you know what that's like. So if you're in school and a kid's playing the drums and you can hear him in the classroom next door, it's certainly a distraction. By moving all of the specials into this area, regular education will not be impacted by some of the specials, especially something like music, locker rooms, and then the gym obviously getting touched up as well. If you go to the rest of that first floor, sort of the left side of that building, again, you can see some of the triangle wedge-shaped classrooms up here. Those will be alleviated with some of the pod classrooms that we have here. Science labs get a little bit bigger as well. Uh, and then you're really able to take advantage of these specials areas. That's part of that green area as well. Obviously, you don't see it in here, but everything is going to be changed. So we're getting new floors. All that stuff is going to be replaced. So if you've been in the middle school at this point, it's not just gutting the classrooms. It's doing the entire thing from, from light switches all the way up to the most complex parts of the HVAC system. Uh, that HVAC system is desperately needed in this building. There are teachers and students that often talk about one classroom. You need shorts and a t-shirt and very right next door to what you're, have kids, you'll have kids in jackets, long pants and winter hats because it's freezing in those classrooms. So all of that's going to be taken care of with that renovated upgraded HVAC system, which will include the air conditioning. You go to the second floor, which is directly above the slide I just showed you. Again, wedge-shaped classrooms. It'll essentially be a mirror of that first floor. Um, more spaces squared off for the educational space, getting rid of all those systems that are at the end of life. Ceilings and walls will be open, so you can do all that at the same time. Uh, and certainly makes us a cost-effective way of taking care of the entire middle school project. So the phasing for this project looks like this. If, if the bond passes in March, uh, things will begin. It won't happen right away. We have to take time to go through all the plans, inside, outside, the grounds. During that time, we'll be working with Bandwell to finish up those plans and then working with DEW to work on the phasing for that construction project here as well. But the projects will run concurrently. As we mentioned, we need that space and we can't renovate the middle school and make it a three-grade building until that elementary school is finished. So we need to have both projects going at the same time. Uh, and that's why they're both being put on the ballot at the same time. So it looks like everything will be done uh, ideally by the summer of twenty twenty-five, so twenty twenty-six, twenty-five, twenty-six school year will be the first year where everything will be back to normal and uh, all the kids, all the construction equipment will be gone if everything goes according to plan. So now, this is the, excuse me. This is the part that uh, everybody will have a lot of questions on. Is what will this project cost? We talked about the eighty-three million. But if you take a look back to where we were a year ago, that number is significantly less, as I mentioned, uh, during the open when we were talking. And that's really essentially because of resources and timing at the time. We had La Valley Brenzinger. We didn't have a lot of resources to develop these fully uh, elaborate plans. We've certainly put a lot more into that, a lot more time and energy into that now with Bandwell. Once we hired the architect we were going to go with. But La Valley Brenzinger gave us an idea as to what it would look like, and that's why the price tag came back at ninety-eight million. Since we've worked with Bandwell, DEW, and then with the SAU administration and staff, gotten that down to just about fifty-two million. So a significant savings on that elementary school project. Part of that is design. Part of that is looking at efficiencies that the school system is able to take care of. Places where we can hire somebody as opposed to going through the architect or going through the construction manager. There is a savings on the middle school portion of it, but since that is a more contained project where you know what you're going to get, you're gutting everything out and it's a matter of maybe what light switch you're going to put in one room compared to the other, things like that. The cost savings aren't as drastic. Um, but the project certainly, uh, the scope of that project doesn't change. The new school project was significantly different than the three-school project that we first looked at, or three-level project, I should say, that we first looked at um, with La Valley Brenzinger. So that's where we are for the eighty-three million. So, excuse me, uh, there we go. So the question is why at the same time, I touched on that uh, a minute ago. It's because we need the space at the same time. It's a solution for the entire district and you can't really do one school without doing the other. Plus, when you're building a project like this, if you're essentially doing two different building projects, you're going to save time on some of those soft costs like permitting, project managers, insurance, all of those things that you'd have to do a second time if you do two separate uh, concurrent or uh, consecutive projects where those costs would be doubled up. Now we're saving a lot of that time and a lot of that energy and a lot of the money by doing it now. Why now? Victoria certainly touched upon the needs of the school system at this point, but financially, uh, it's not going to get cheaper to be able to do it now than down the road. Uh, it's going to be cheaper now than to be able to do it down the road. If we were to estimate just a four percent construction increase year over year, you're looking at an additional one-point-two-million dollars per year. So about an extra ten million to bump that Amherst Middle School project up from thirty-one million to about forty-three million, a little over uh, I, I, I should say ten years. So it's about a million, a one-point-two a year. And then in ten years, you're looking at about a twelve-million-dollar increase. It's a significant savings to be able to do this now, just on the uh, the construction side of things. That's let alone to take into effect what the bond rates will look like in a couple of years. Right now, recent projects are at about one-point-nine-eight percent. We've budgeted two percent for all of our figure, uh, configurations tonight. Um, so certainly, it's, it's not going to get cheaper than what it is right now. We have been asked, what about state building aid? Uh, it is something that we are going to apply for. We've already started that process. In fact, we actually met with Senator Gary Daniels today to discuss what some of the options were and different ways to try to be able to apply for state funding and maybe some other grants and, and programs that are out there for the school system to be able to do this. They don't award state aid. You don't know what you're going to get until after you pass your bond vote. So we've already submitted a letter of intent. And then once the bond vote comes through, successful or unsuccessful- And then once the bond vote comes through successful or unsuccessful, we'll be able to take those next steps. Our application, if the bond passes, is due in July of 22, but that means we can't do groundbreaking until July of 23. But if it can save us millions of dollars through state aid, certainly slowing down that timeline by a year is only gonna benefit everybody in the long run. As we look at what the tax assumptions are going to be, what the tax impact is going to be, these are the figures. That we based our assumptions on with the new valuation of the town, a new tax rate setback in November. And then looking at 30 year bonds, we're assuming a 2% interest rate right now. And then the figures that we're coming up with are based off of the average home value in Amherst. 482,000, which is all the the updated information after evaluations were done in the 2021 year. So if you look at what the tax impact is going to be year one, it's a lower impact. It's probably the lowest impact that it's gonna see. About $258 for the year, $21 a month for the average size house in Amherst. You can certainly figure out where your house falls. In line to the average size house. It goes up to year two, it'll be just under $900. That is the high watermark and then it will. Will go down from there down to $583 in year 30 of this bond process. So if you look at the waterfall there, that's what the 30 year process will look like. And again, just like your home, the more principal you pay off than. You know, the less interest you're paying on the back end of that. One thing to note, we've said this before, we'll say it again, 83 million is our high watermark. If we don't need 83 million, money will get returned to taxpayers. If we don't need to sell all 83 million dollars in bonds right away. We certainly won't do that and anything that we don't use will get returned. So we're going to try to do this as efficiently and as a cost efficiently as possible. Because as I mentioned, or as I should have mentioned, we're taxpayers in this town, just like you are. So we have concerns about what the tax rate is gonna look like for us over the next 30 years as well. So that is the main school project. Excuse me again. As we go to voting day, you will see a second construction related bond article on the ballot and this one is for solar technology. So it's a separate bond article because it's not educationally necessary. It's not necessary for our building to have this. But the board thought that it was a good decision based off public feedback that we got at some of our public forums. Let taxpayers decide if we should have solar on this building. So the school may pass, the solar may not pass. They both might pass. The one thing I guarantee you is that if the school doesn't pass, then the solar project won't pass as well. It's obviously null and void. If we don't have a school to put solar panels on. Either way, no matter what happens, as long as that school passes, regardless of what happens to the solar article this year. If that doesn't pass, our schools will be built with the capability of adding solar technology later. So all the structural work will be done to be able to take the weight of solar panels on the roof, whether it's next year. Or if it's 10 or 15 years down the line when solar becomes potentially more cost efficient. But that is the plan right now is to bring a separate article forward for 2.2 million to be able to add on to this project, but it is a separate bond article. So it does not have to pass. The school does not, the school has to pass, but this does not have to pass in order for the school to pass. In terms of an ROI for the school system, we decided, you know, one of the reasons we thought it was a good investment to bring to the town voters. According to Revision Energy, the lifespan of these solar panels is about 40 years. And then you can see about a little less than halfway through that, you get your ROI back 17 years for AMS and 18 years. For Clark Wilkins and that's essentially just based on the power generated by the solar layout on top of each building. Clark Wilkins is a much bigger solar layout than what we'll have on Amherst on the middle school rather. And so that's why Amherst's, the middle schools is a little bit shorter timeline simply because. They have a smaller panel system, but also they're gonna be generating less energy. And there is a 25 year warranty. So we will get our ROI back. Before the warranty expires on those panels after 25 years. The bond article will be for 202,222,000. It's going to be 2.2 million for the bond. That's a pretty solid number from for the estimates that we have to what it's gonna actually cost to do that. And then we will appropriate the interest as part of that 2.222 million to pay that first year interest payment on this bond. And you can see the cost breakdown by facility there. The bulk of it is at the elementary school. And then 900,000 for Amherst Middle School. And again, this is a separate article on the ballot. It does not have to pass for the school to pass, but if the school doesn't pass, this will not pass regardless of what the vote stands. So to take a look at the specific warrant articles, there are two of them, as I mentioned, Article 12, which is the facility project. That will read like this, to see if the district will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of 83 million gross budget. Of which 30,492,000 shall be used for the purpose of renovation to Amherst Middle School located at 14 Cross Road, Amherst, New Hampshire. And 51,678,000 shall be used for the purpose of a related major edition reconstruction and renovation project for Clark Wilkins Elementary School. Located at 14 Founder Street in Amherst and 80 Boston Post Road, Amherst, New Hampshire. And authorize the issuance of not more than 82,170,000 of bonds or notes. Under and in compliance with the Municipal Bond Finance Act RSA 331. Et cetera, as amended to authorize the school board to apply for, obtain and accept federal, state or other aid, if any. Which may be available for said project and to comply with all laws applicable to said project. To authorize the school board to issue, negotiate, sell and deliver said bonds and notes and to determine the rate of interest thereon and the maturity and other terms thereof. And authorize the school board to take any action or to pass any other vote relative thereto. And to further and further to raise and appropriate an additional sum of 2,700, 2,750,000 for the first year's interest payment on the bond. And furthermore, to appropriate up to 830,000 in interest earned on the invested bond proceeds for the purposes of said project. Such project, excuse me. And just like Article 13, we'll see. It is a super majority that is seen. It is not a 50 plus one majority. You do need three fifths of the ballot to approve this project. It's not my choice, by the way, to read these. We have to read them and that's why we're doing this. It's not just to read fun things. So Article 13, the solar technology. To see if the district will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of 2,222,000 for gross budget. Of which 900,000 shall be used for the purpose of installing solar voltaic technology. As part of the renovation of Amherst Middle School located at 14 Cross Road in Amherst. And 1,300,000 shall be used for the purpose of installing solar voltaic technology. As part of the related major edition reconstruction and renovation project for Clark Wilkins Elementary School located at 14 Foundry Street in Amherst. And 80 Boston Post Road in Amherst. And authorize the issuance of not more than 2.2 million of bonds or notes under and in compliance with the municipal bond. Excuse me, Municipal Finance Act RSA 331. As amended, to authorize the school board to apply for, obtain and accept federal, state or other aid, if any. Which may be available for said project and to comply with laws applicable to said project. To authorize the school board to issue, negotiate, sell and deliver said bonds and notes and to determine the rate of interest thereon. And the maturity and other terms thereof. And authorize the school board to take any action or to pass any vote relative thereto and further to raise and appropriate an additional sum of 58,000. For the first year's interest payment on the bond and furthermore to appropriate up to 22,000 in interest earned on the invested bond proceeds for purposes of such project. Article 13 is contingent upon the passage of Article 12 and will be null and void if Article 12 does not pass. And as mentioned, a three fifths ballot vote is required. So with that, we invite you to show up to town voting day on March 8th at South Heagan right here from 6 a.m. to 8 p.m. And this is all the information for additional details on the school project. You can find it at jfac.sau39.org. And I certainly want to thank all of the JFAC members. There are many, many, many to name, but I will call out Shannon Gascón in particular. She chaired this committee for the last year plus. I know Shannon is here tonight as well. I will not go through the entire JFAC list, but all of their efforts are greatly appreciated to get us to this point. You can certainly find out who was on the committee and again, look at renderings and other FAQs and other school related information on that JFAC website. So with that, I will pause now and we will open it up for questions as I'm sure people have them. So if you have questions, there are two microphones. Come up to the mic, say your name and your town of residence and we will go from there. Really? Okay.
Yes, somebody's gotta be first. I'm Peter Hanson, 82nd Avenue Street. I have a number of questions, not a lot, but a number. One would be, just to put it away quickly. What were the figures used for the payback for the solar part of the of the second article? My concern is that those numbers may have been used under current. Energy policy within the state, which is quite flexible and after change at a moment's notice. And so I wonder how, if that was used, how confident we are of that payback period.
Mr. Steele, I will turn to you because I believe you've had further conversations with them than we have. We've had more conversation.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. We relied upon a local company in New Hampshire. And asked them to provide estimates of ROI and payback. And so. I'm trusting and relying upon their expertise and not any of our own. So we use numbers and figures from that company.
So we don't really know what makes up that figure, actually. The payback figure. I'm concerned about the payback figure and what how it was developed. As a homeowner, if I put in a solar system, I'm going to get a. A payback period. And it's up to me to be cautious about what is used for that payback figure. If they're using current PUC numbers and PUC says or the state agency says, no, no, no. Those numbers are worthless. And so that really is my question. Were were the numbers used averages or current numbers which which? There's a lot of things going on and conquered about those numbers right now is a problem, you know. So. I guess I'll just let it rest there, but be advised that I'll be aware that. There may be some other questions about it at some future point in time.
Appreciate that. So is your specific concern that the rates used to calculate the buyback might fluctuate based on PUC activity at the state level?
Yeah, look at words. Yeah, definitely.
Got it.
PUC may or may not allow, allow, I mean, right now rate payers from around the state are paying. Subsidies to people with getting solar. I assume that applies to municipalities as well as individual homes. Those things are not guaranteed to last 14 years or 40 years or whatever it is that's been projected here to us tonight. And so the question really is, you know, how realistic is that number, I guess, and what was used to develop that?
God, I, we can look into that so we can answer more clearly, but essentially what we've done is taken the capital cost of the solar. And divided by what we think is going to be the offset that we that we receive, that we don't have to pay our utility company for. And it will take us 14 to 15 years to get to that point where we've saved enough money to offset what we would have paid to our utility company.
Okay.
Yeah.
Rather than rather than as rather than as an investment, you're just, the number was calculated on what you will not be paying. Based on what is projected to be, who knows the sun, what is projected to be the energy produced and therefore reduces our bill.
That's right.
Okay, thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
And may I proceed?
Sure.
My other concern, my deepest concern about the new middle school is. The introduction of four, I think it is four classrooms for special ed or for pre-K, excuse me, for pre-K. I've done some homework on that and I understand that that. A number of things about about that, that we're committed to do that, we have to do that and that. Currently, there's like 56 or 59 students in the program. 22, I think of which are designated as, as. I don't know what the appropriate word is, but. Eligible, I guess, is what we're using.
Sure.
Eligible for that. And so that breaks down to about two and a half people, two and a half. Students, both. Peers and eligibles per currently in the in the room. Quite frankly, I'm concerned that the building of four classrooms. Is is merely. The first step in introducing pre-K, state line or town line. And after what happened with kindergarten situation, I'm not sure that. It wouldn't be wise for us to assure the people that are voting for these bonds that this is not part of the plan.
I I think.
Just leave it at that, but I mean, it, you know. And I understand fully that pre that pre-K for eligible people is a must. And I also understand that we must have to provide them with peers. I do understand that. But four classrooms appears to be based on what figures we are using right now. Seems to be a significant amount of extra room, I guess, for for that purpose.
And I can, I can say that the way that the preschool system works now is that students, when they're three years old, and Mr. Steele, correct me if I'm if I misspeak here, when they're three years old, if they're identified as having. An educational need, that's where they can come, where we're federally mandated to provide preschool for them. We do tuition the rest of the students in. So if we have general education students that want to attend preschool here. So it is a program where we're not mandated to have to do this. It's not a mandate that we have to open it up to every kid in town. I believe we have a lottery system is how we use this. It's a waiting list, excuse me.
My understanding is we are mandated to have peers within that those classrooms.
Yeah, there's some interesting things about preschool. First, it's required nationwide under IDEA. I know you know that because we've had the conversation, but for others who are paying attention. So every. Local school district across the country is required to provide preschool services to students with an identified educational disability, starting at age three. So one of the unique things about preschools that our enrollment grows during the year because more kids turn three during the course of the school year, unlike kindergarten. Where if you're a certain age by September 1, you can enroll for that entire school year. Preschool is unique in that you you join preschool the moment you turn three, whether it's in the summer, the fall, spring or winter. The second thing that's unique is many students who have an IEP. Are required in that IEP to be around non-disabled peers as a part of their program. And again, I know you that. I'm really speaking for the rest of the room. And so if we weren't able to provide that locally by tuitioning other non-disabled peers into those preschool classrooms. We would be required to still provide that level of service by tuitioning our preschool students to somewhere else. And so it's still more cost effective for us to run that program here. I can state that we don't have plans to propose universal preschool for every three and four year old in Amherst. That's not part of our plan. It might be part of other people's plans on a national level, but it's nothing we've ever discussed or even seriously considered at the local level.
Okay, and thank you for that, by the way. And. Well, I think I think I'll just probably leave it at that until, you know, opportunity to speak. Thank you very much for your.
Thank you. Victoria, did you have anything more? Okay, perfect. Any further questions? No need to be shy. Okay. So with that, we're all set to adjourn. I thank everybody for coming tonight. We will have our. Next public forum to talk about facilities on January 22. It will be at the middle school. Again, you'll be able to tour the middle school that night. Take a look at the school and learn again more about these projects. And as we go along in this project, any more. Design updates, any further information that we have, we'll be able to share those on the JFAC website, which is behind me. As well at those public forums. You can find the entire public forum schedule on our website or you can go to sau39.org. And look at the calendar there. They have the the dates on the calendar on the SAU website as well. So we thank everybody for coming tonight for the bond hearing. That's all we had to do, correct?
Correct.
Correct. And then tomorrow night, we will have our public hearing. To get a look at the actual overall school budget, you'll see some of this information as part of tomorrow night's presentation. But the bulk of it will be focusing on the actual FY23 school budget, which we'll bring forward for the first time tomorrow night. So have a great night, stay warm.
Perhaps a, perhaps a motion from the board to close the public hearing.
Excuse me, let's have a motion from the board. I have a motion to close the public hearing for Ms. Kuzma, a second for Ms. Parisi, all in favor. Four, and that will be it. We are officially closed in our bond hearing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.